I'd like to call the meeting of our committee to order, and I would like for a roll call. I'm sorry. No, it's not public.
No, I'm sorry.
Your public works. This is the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting. Sorry for being a little bit nervous, but Joe's not here today, and I had to fill in at the last minute, and I was, but I am prepared now. Could we have a roll call of those present?
Alderman, Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Canella.
Here.
Alderman Coles. Alderman. Alderman.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Luton.
Here.
And Alderman Wesley.
Here.
And Alderman Police.
A quorum being present, I call the meeting to order. Can we have approval of the minutes of the last meeting? All those in favor of the October 23 meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes of October 23.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Tonight, we're going to have a guest speaker from the DuPage Senior Council, Citizens Council, on their nutrition program. Our guest speaker will be Mary Lynn Krolak, and we are also honored to have the Vice President of the Board of Directors, Howard Larson, present. I'm going to turn this over to Officer Vesper, Vestor, Vesta, to introduce our guest speaker.
Thanks, Alderman. As the Alderman mentioned, pleased to be joined by representatives from the DuPage Senior Citizen Council tonight. Part of our annual budget process includes setting aside monies to contribute to their nutrition program, which also includes home delivery of meals for seniors of Wooddale. This is going to be for their previous ending fiscal year request for payment, and then we're going to be working with them in the current upcoming budget process to request funding for next fiscal year. So Ms. Krolak's going to give a brief presentation and a short video about the program, and after that, we would be seeking approval in the amount of $5,000 to contribute to the program for this year. Ms. Krolak?
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I guess it is on. It's an honor to be here and to be your guest speaker this evening. I'd like to just talk a little bit about the council and then show our video right away, but the DuPage Senior Citizens Council is a 501(c)(3). We've been around since 1975. We started out in housing and created other entities such as senior home sharing in this county, and in the early '80s, applied for and got the contract to do home-delivered meals and congregate meals in DuPage County. At that time, the Y system was doing it. They could not implement it and decided they didn't want to do it, so we applied for that contract. We received it and have had it ever since. It's commonly called Meals on Wheels, of course. It's kind of like Kleenex and tissue. It's tissue, but we all call tissue Kleenex most of the time. But the money comes through the Older Americans Act, which was enacted under the Johnson administration, and then passed on through to locality so that they can implement programs for seniors. That's the background, but I think what tells it rather nicely is a video that we put together a few years ago. If you may have seen it in the past, but it is timeless, and I'd like to turn it over to your technical crew, and you can take a look at that and learn about our programs. And I guess for us, that kind of sums it up and says it all. We're here today to be very honored to accept what I hope you will give us for the nutrition program. But I am hoping that the video will remind you of the scope. We serve about 350,000 meals a day in DuPage County. We serve meals to about 1,000 seniors a day, 1,000 meals to about 1,000 seniors. The numbers are growing. The costs are growing, and unfortunately, because of the economy, the amount that the seniors can offer us and send us in terms of a donation is going down. So although we made this DVD a couple of years ago, it is very, very timely. I'd like to bring it down to a local perspective and kind of give you an idea on what we do here in Wooddale. But going back through about 2002, we served that year just a little over 7,000 meals. We now, this last year, served 10,750 meals, so we're serving more meals to more people. In Wooddale, we serve, back in 2002, 61. We're now at about 75 people. Project income, and that is what the seniors donate towards the meals. Back in '02, it was 7,000. It went up for a couple of years to 10,000. Then it dropped back down in '05, '06 to about 7,000 again, and it's about 9,000 this year. What that translates in terms of a cost gap is we have a cost gap of about $4 a meal, and that has fluctuated over the past few years, from $4,450 back up to $475. One year, we were graced with some extra money from the United Way when they consolidated. But the cost gap for those meals, and what we have to raise to provide services in Wooddale alone runs, this last year, $33,000. So your $5,000 budgeted amount, if you choose to award that to us, goes to offset that. In Wooddale alone, we still have to raise the difference. So your run rate in Wooddale is anywhere from about $25,000 to $35,000, depending on what the costs are and what the state of the economy is. And we work very hard to raise those funds, to continue to provide Monday through Friday In other parts of the state, even in the region, many of the other nutrition providers or the Meals on Wheels folks, they are now doing a one-day-a-week drop. They'll drop five meals off on a Monday, let's say, and they're frozen. But because of the wonderful volunteer force that we have, we are still able to do a delivery of a hot meal every day, and then offer in DuPage County and in Wooddale, of course, that added value effort of doing that well-being check. Every single senior that's supposed to be there, we make sure that they are. And if they're not, we go through a five-point emergency follow-up procedure, calling next of kin, finding out, oh, they may have gone to the doctor and forgot to tell us. But it all ends with us calling the police department, and I said, I asked right before I started if we had any well-being checks this week, and we didn't. Okay? But the DuPage Senior Citizens Council has that added value to its nutrition program in that we do follow up on every single one of the seniors. So growing old is not for sissies. It's going to be, continue to get tougher, and there are going to be more and more seniors out there. They are a valued commodity and something that certainly has been our focus and our mission since 1975. We are dedicated to it. We are honored that we have such a wonderful partner in you, working with the police department in taking care of the seniors. I've talked mostly about nutrition tonight. It is our biggest program. We also do the home maintenance and the minor chore days. But the cost gap is most evident in the home-delivered meal program itself. Let me open it up to questions at this point, if you have any.
Mary Lynn?
Yeah.
I understand there was a recent article in the Wall Street Journal that said that the real estate industry had analyzed senior homes that were up for sale and had come up with a statistic that 25% of the homes had had no maintenance in the last 10 years, and that was one of the problems in getting a market value price for the homes. Your home maintenance program sounds like a wonderful aid to seniors. How much, how many volunteers do you get, and how much achievement does it get into the home?
Well, our overall volunteer force, we've got about 1,500 volunteers in DuPage County. Out of that number, there are approximately 600 that volunteer in the double digits, more than 10 hours or 11 hours a year. Out of that 600, there's about 300 that volunteer in a very dedicated manner with either providing chore days and helping with the maintenance of homes or by delivering those meals on a daily basis. So, and so you know, those volunteer hours, where a lot of, some of our other sister agencies and other counties in Illinois and certainly across the country are paying people to do that, we still have this volunteer force, and we're very unique and very, it's very special about DuPage County. But when we tabulate those volunteer hours at a minimum wage and project that in some reports that we have to do, that totals in excess of $400,000 that we do not have to raise because of the fact that we've got these volunteer hours. To answer your question as to how it will get back into the home and help the seniors, I firmly believe that our program, both the chore days program and the home maintenance program, keeps the homes maintained as well as possible on the minimum income that the seniors who own them have. These seniors are property-rich, but they have no income, and so our very, very low rates in helping them do minor home repairs and also in keeping their yard attractive does give back to the community and certainly helps the senior age in place.
Maybe you'd like to take a minute and explain to the listening audience how to go about getting their name on a volunteer list?
Absolutely. I've got a card here that I have left, and I certainly will urge all of you to call the DuPage Senior Citizens Council at 630-620-0804. We actually have a volunteer solicit manager who solicits actively, and we would love to have you volunteer deliver meals, do chore days. We are looking for people to, who have specialty skills to serve on committees on our board, and also very many administrative volunteer tasks that we have in the office. Our budget is pushing $3 million, and half of that is, comes from federal and state funds and United Way. The other half, we have to raise.
Did you say that phone number was area code 630-260-0804?
It's 630-620-0804.
Right. Ed?
Yeah, excuse me. Since Wooddale is kind of lacking in affordable senior housing, I would like to make a motion that we not approve the budget amount of $5,000, but that we raise it to $10,000. That's my motion.
Alderman Wesley, can you tell us if that's in the budget?